Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, we do have a bear quorum here this evening, council. We're not sure if Councilman Revolinski is going to be at the meeting or not, but we know that Thompson and Hamilton will not. So we'll proceed. Any additions to this evening's agenda? Yes, Michael?
I'd like to give a quick announcement about Homebase Iowa event coming up on Wednesday.
Okay, councilmen, we'll move to our consent agenda. And in the agenda, we have approval of minutes from the April 25 meeting and also our special council meeting on May 4. We have approval of the May 6 payroll of $85,944.55. We have a park use permit for emergency services, 9/11 ceremony in September. We have a resolution of employment in the fire department for Steve Winslow and Justin Monnet. And we have a resolution of employment in the police department of Teresa Spurgeon at Communications. We have a resolution of employment for Park and Recreation Department. Those are park employees, part-time employees. Also, approval of cigarette permits for ghost vape, approval of liquor license for the Hy-Vee meeting room and Hy-Vee store, approval of claims in the amount of $199,777.92. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes, with the exception of the May 4 remarks, abstained from that portion.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Council, we'll move on to our public appearances. First, we have Nancy Schnett from Alliant Energy, who's here with something very exciting for us. Nancy?
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy Schnett. I'm an account manager with Alliant Energy. I support the community and also the large industrial customers in the area. We have an operation center here in Fairfield with 14 employees. And if it's all right, I'd like to just make a few remarks about some of the ways that we've supported our community before I make the big presentation. Is that okay?
Be happy to hear them. Absolutely.
All right, fantastic. Well, as I mentioned, we have 14 employees here in the community. And we've been working also with the Local Economic Development Group and assisting the Chamber of Commerce through annual investor support and dues, and the site location and existing industry through the support of the Loess database, and also with Synchronist. Some of the other things that we did to support the community, and this would have been in 2015, we had a grant to the library for a summer reading program. We did a program with the Arc of Jefferson in nearby communities for camperships. We supported the prom, All Things Italian Street. We did an ad for the festival. And most recently, I supported Rebecca Johnson doing some evening outreach with a program that she had at the library. And we were able to supply some materials and brainstorm through some links that she was able to access, targeting energy efficiency education for some of our customers. We also did a nice tree planting through our branching out program with a $12,250 grant. We have had a lot of participation with energy efficiency rebates across all customer classes. So we have residential customers, commercial customers, and business customers. And the 2015 impacts for that were a total of 346 rebates. And in a community this size, that really says a lot. The kilowatt hour estimated savings is 766,000 kilowatt hours. And the incentives totaled just under $180,000 at 179,763. We also have a program for dealers. And these would be contractors that install HVAC equipment and things like that to help residents save money. And the dealers, we supported them with incentives just under $12,000. We've also spent quite a bit on electric infrastructure in the community. This is where you see our line crews out there in the fields, putting up transformers, extending lines, doing life cycle extensions with poles and things like that. And in 2015, we spent $128,667 on electric. And then the gas infrastructure, we spent an additional $65,492. And of course, we're also a significant taxpayer in the community. In Fairfield, we paid $206,375. And then in Jefferson County, we had a total of $332,000. And this would have been last fiscal year. So some of the other things, I've had the pleasure of supporting your community in my role since it's been about a year now, just last April. And I'm working with Mike and some of his team. We had identified some opportunities on some projects that were open. And you participated in what we call our new construction program with the community center. And what's great about that is we're able to work with your design team on paper to help them vet some of the opportunities and determine which technologies are going to be the best for your project. And some of the savings that they realized were going to be that building is 40% more efficient on the electric and 23% more efficient on the gas. And it's fun to hand out checks like this. But I'll tell you, year over year, the energy savings that you realize from making that initial investment in the efficiency is really, really what you're going to be glad that you decided to buy a blue ribbon building. So I was here the other day, wanted to make sure I gave them the actual check. Get that out of my hands before I misplace it, misfile it, or otherwise. But I have a ceremonial check, and I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor?
Actually, I'm going to ask our city administrator to accept that. That's okay?
Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
I'll let him take one of them. You guys look over here first, okay? One, two, three. Got it.
Okay.
And then I'll get one, two, one, two, three. One, two, three. All right, now let's do one more. One, two, three.
Okay, very good.
Fantastic.
Nancy, before you sit down, thank you so much. We really appreciate the work that you've done with our community, and we're happy to be able to participate. And we are appreciative and proud of the additional benefits that we'll be getting from the energy efficiency. One of the, one project that we're working on are downtown lighting. We replaced some of that six or seven years ago. There's some additional lighting that is, the light poles are quite old, and we're trying to determine whether that is something that we can move into a different, a different form of lighting, something that's composite or-
Fiberglass.
Fiberglass poles as opposed to wood poles. And is that something that your offices is looking into with us?
I would be happy to talk to you about all the different options available.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
There, there's a host of things out there. And, you know, we can just talk about all the different options. I know, I saw the email traffic, and we're just about ready to wrap up the details on the comprehensive inventory-
Okay, great.
-that we did through this community. One of the things that we did last year, you might remember this, if you've seen your bill, some of you guys, I don't know if your wife gets the mail at home, or if you do, but we did an all-new billing system last year. And it would have come out with the February bill. It's our, we're calling it Customer Care and Billing. And with the advent of that new billing system, we decided to take a level set with all of our communities. And we did a comprehensive inventory to make sure that we were billing the customers correctly. And there used to be basically just one number that you paid for streetlights. Well, now it's broken down. You will be able to see if you're paying for a wood pole, a dedicated wood pole, a shared wood pole, a fiberglass pole, how many watts the light is, whether it's metal halide, hypressure sodium, or the LED style, and just how that breaks out. So I should see the final report, and I'll certainly come back and share the details with you. And then at that time, if you're interested in looking at all the options available, and really just understanding the host of opportunities, and we can determine what's your best way to move forward for your town.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, this is very timely for us, because we are going to be doing a street, a building facade restoration over the next six months. So if we can include some of that in the work, it would be wonderful.
Well, and I'm going to just kind of pile on my earlier point. If any of the building owners, through their restoration, are going to be looking at significant remodels that are going to touch on things like HVAC, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, or lighting, we might have some opportunities to help them with some rebates as well.
I think we should put you in touch with, well, I think our engineer, engineering representative, Melanie Carlson would be able to-
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And we do have an open project for your water treatment plant changes. Okay, so that's open. And then we also, just like over at the pool, we, Derek Wolfkill and I identified some pumps, and we got a rebate going for that one, too. That was $1,050. So I think once you get kind of a understanding of how the programs work, get us involved early. Let us help you determine what is eligible. And then we'll work with you through the process to see if we can maximize your investments. Customers pay into these programs. That is how they're funded. And the best way for you to realize your dollars back is through participating in rebates, or audits, or some of the other things that we offer through our demand-side management programs.
Great.
Okay.
Okay. Nancy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Just one addition, Mayor. Nancy, could you speak to the projected amount of the savings and the actual amount of the savings at the rec. center?
Well, I have it in, in kilowatt hours, the electric consumption savings were estimated to be 119,502 kilowatt hours. And the thermes, and this is annual, and the gas consumption savings were estimated to be 5,204. Okay? And the savings, the way they, the calculations on the new construction is a little bit different. On the custom rebate, it's a year and a half worth of energy savings. So it's real simple math. I would have been able to estimate $20,000 a year if this would have been a custom rebate. But I'm not quite sure with the new construction, if I could estimate the dollar savings, because they, this is made proportional to what the incremental additional investment would be.
Sure.
Yeah.
I could speak to that just quickly. Our estimated savings on this project was approximately $26,000. And the actual savings come in at $33,000 and change. The project actually finished better than what was originally anticipated.
It did verify better, yeah. Because the, the rough estimate was 26 to 34, and this came in at 33,652 on the high side. So that just really tells you what a nice building that is. And what an asset for this community, too. Fantastic.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come to the check. Oh, here it is. Isn't that funny? Isn't the first time that somebody's heard me say, "What happened to the?"
Okay. Next, we have Jim Hobart, who has a proposed development that has been working with the Fairfield Economic Development Association and the city on. Jim, can you give your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I got a handout here I want to pass out first. It'll be about the property that we're talking about. This is the Robert Daniels-
Thanks, Jim.
-property.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Located across the road from the new hospital, across from Casey's, by Pilatus Grove Bank. We were called in by Adam to look at some opportunities here in Fairfield. And it was, it was based upon Fairfield hasn't had a whole lot of new homes built, and there's a definite need to try and get some construction going to retain people that work in town rather than have them live outside of town. So they called us in, us being Hobart Historic Restoration, which is a family-owned business. We're out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Our biggest piece of the pie is historic buildings and restoring them. We just are in the process of closing out on the Mott Building in Cedar Rapids, getting it finished up. We've got it full of tenants, except for one unit empty. And then we're also working on the Mount Pleasant, the Brazelton Hotel, right off the square on Mount Pleasant. We also are doing a new build in Cedar Rapids. And in our company, between myself, my wife, and my two sons, we have, I have over 35 years in the construction business. They also have a lot of experience as project managers, plumbers, and pipe fitters in the construction business. So we have the construction background. And with Adam calling us in and taking a look at different properties, we kind of chose Bob, Robert Daniels' property. He has 4.9 acres there. We proposed to buy four acres of that and build two to three units immediately, one being a model unit, real similar to the Southgate property. That seems to be, has a good record, has a list, I think, of customers that are looking for that type of unit. So that is our proposal to come in and start with one or two units, see how they sell. It's, they seem to be very good interest from the realtors we've talked to and the bankers here in town. And we hope it takes off and it expands from there. It could expand into multiple, you know, 10, 15, 20 buildings, along with possibly some single-family residents in behind that area.
Great. And then on the map, Bob, if you could point out to the council where you would do those initial units?
The initial units would be, we would not purchase the north side of the church. There's about a .9 acre area right there. We would, we would be on the south side toward Pilot Grove.
Okay.
And along that existing street that is, that is there right now, the first three would go along that existing street. As they sold from there, we'd be putting a new street going east-west, heading back toward Southgate.
Okay. And that would be, and that would be at what point? Would that be, where that, where that road, road ends right now, how far west?
That is, that is almost the end of the property, of Robert Daniels' property. There's another portion behind that that is for sale. And then the Zaragoza property is, would probably be another property we would be interested in.
Right. Okay.
Your demo property, is it single-family, multifamily?
It'll be a four-unit, just like the Southgates. And we'll probably take one of the units and build it out as like our model home office. And then we'll sell the other three. And hopefully, we get enough interest that we can start putting more units in the grounds, you know, one building at a time as they sell out.
Okay. Great. Well, we believe that we have that market here. And, you know, we, Adam's probably shared with you all the data that we have on recent housing surveys and the tightness of our real estate market and the type of people who are buying. So I think it's, it is smart to, to start with a model. I think that really does help. We don't see a lot of that within our community, so we appreciate the risk that you take to do that. And council, any, any questions regarding this? And I, we're also, are we going to get a little bit more of a proposal about what has been discussed thus far with the developments?
Did you want to do that now, or at the Economic Development Committee report?
I was just going to say that maybe you should just go ahead and do it right now.
I would do it right now.
I was just going to say, Adam, why don't, you know?
If that's okay. Jim, thank you. So let's find out where we are, and then see what other questions come up.
So, yeah, we reached out to Jim and B.J. a while back ago, knowing that we have a great project with Martin on the north side of town, and really looking to get a second project going here as well. And landed on this piece of property. And we had an Economic Development Committee last week, two weeks ago. And it's an interesting piece of property. If you look at that map there, there's a sewer main that runs north Pilot Grove all the way through this property up to Southgate. So the sewer main's almost completely taken care of for this development. And you can vision the road running parallel with that sewer main just off to the east or the west, probably the east. And there's also water on the property on the southwest corner where the Lincoln turns. So there's not too much water that needs to go into this as well. So varying away from the traditional TIF policy that we've looked at, it's probably a pretty good opportunity for the city to take on a couple hundred thousand dollars with the infrastructure work here, because the actual TIF increment is going to end up being probably more than $500,000. And so with this being phase one of the project, we could do an urban renewal area within a greater span of this, including perhaps the Zaragoza property or part of Larry Rippey's and Hickam Bottoms, and be able to kind of set the groundwork for the next phase of development with the additional increment that would be left over from this. So this is what you're looking at here. The draft terms are kind of the core essence of what the development agreement might look like. It hasn't been drafted in final form yet. But we'd be looking to maybe get some sort of consensus with the council on whether this is the direction you'd like to proceed. The vote from the Economic Development Committee was to proceed with the draft and development agreement along these terms. Is that a fair statement?
Good. Martha, any comment from your committee?
I was just going to say, I think that, you know, our committee, I mean, I guess it comes later in the council proceedings. But basically, you know, when the Economic Development Committee met with Jim and with Adam and with Mike, that we all felt that it was definitely something that we were very much hopeful that we could proceed with. I mean, the committee certainly is very much in favor of seeing this project come to fruition, because we think that it's definitely is needed in the community. And I think, you know, what he's projecting is the type of things that we're looking for.
Great, thanks, Martha. Mike, comments also? And if you can talk about the distinction between what we have traditionally done with TIF and what, how this varies?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So I was at the Economic Development meeting. And I think it's a very exciting project. We're happy to have the Hobarts here in Fairfield considering a development. It is, if we move forward with this development, and we take action on it at a later meeting, it's likely headed toward a borrow to put the infrastructure costs in. And we're looking at some sort of revenue bond attached to the TIF increment revenue to finance those infrastructure costs. And as you read on item four, those will be prorated based on Mr. Hobart's agreement to develop out all of the 28 units respectively. So, you know, initially, to get the first couple of units developed, I think we're looking at somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000 to get sanitary sewer and water lines to the properties. And those, of course, Mr. Hobart has agreed to, to reimburse the city if those units are not developed as well. Well, he will in the development agreement. So the only concern I brought to light of the committee is that our current TIF policy does preclude both TIF and abatement. And so that's something, if the council decides to move forward with both TIF and abatement, our TIF policy would be, need to be amended to reflect that in the development agreement.
And there might be a little bit of wiggle room in there. The, the TIF policy does say if they participate in the rebate program, this wouldn't necessarily be part of that rebate program. So I'm not sure if this agreement would fall under the TIF policy. But depending on your interpretation, you could absolutely be correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And then, so the final development agreement is going to continue to proceed through committee?
Yes.
And then we'll come to the council at our next meeting?
I think if there's a general consensus, this is the right path. Hopefully, they can close on the property, and then the development agreement can be drafted, sent to committee, and then the full council.
Okay. Any comments from the non-Economic Development Committee members?
I like this very much. Two questions. One, why is our policy currently that we don't, we exclude abatement from TIF? And why would we amend that for this project?
So our policy is typically, it's one or the other. And in this particular case, if the council agrees to borrow the revenue, we will be missing that revenue for the first year. Now, the agreement does only abate the tax for one year, so that's something to consider. But essentially, we're going to be borrowing, and we won't have the revenue coming in the first year to repay the borrow.
And it only abates the first $75,000 of value, so-
Right.
-there would be some increment still left there.
Okay. I'm not trying to say that this is overly generous, but if we're going against our own policy, is it possible that it is overly generous in favor of developer, the way it's written? If we're, if we're doing both, we're paying for infrastructure costs, obviously developers on the line for that if it doesn't come through, and abating. But if we put that in our policy, was there a reason for putting in our policy that we don't do both?
Well, I think that was kind of the decision that the committee was determining, that, you know, it was either one or the other. As, you know, Mike pointed out, with the abatement situation, you know, we would lose that revenue. And so that was a concern that we had.
Yeah, my concern is-
But, you know, and yet we weren't sure if we were ready to proceed with a TIF or not at this time.
I'm a little concerned that we're going to set a precedent here, set a, a policy that other developers are going to expect both moving forward. I mean, it's, it's historical. If we do one agreement for one developer, then others will want the same thing. Seeing a gentleman here who's already, looking at me, and other developers, hey, why can't I get TIF and abatement? So-
I would make one small differentiation between the agreement that Martin Brett will be entering and this one. In this, in Martin's instance, he'll be receiving 100% of the rebate. So if he was to abate any of the taxes, he'd be taking it out of his own pocket.
Yeah.
In this instance, there's projected $500,000 plus in TIF revenue. The infrastructure costs are less than half of that. And so it's because this property is sort of unique that you've already got a sewer main running through it and the road infrastructure right next to it. Even with a one-year abatement of first $75,000 of the first 10 units only, you're still going to see several hundred thousand dollars in excess in that rebate that can be set aside for the future projects that may occur in or around this property as well. So it's a little different, because you'd be pulling it out of your pocket as opposed to the developer pulling it out of his pocket. And I think the TIF policy that's in place simply has that in there. Well, I mean, you could interpret it two ways. Yes, it's too generous, or B, it just doesn't make any sense for the developer to use abatement and TIF, because he'd be abating his own TIF rebate. And that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. And that's the way we set it up, was that the developer, the policy that we worked on when I was on economic development, that the developer paid the infrastructure and then got a rebate once their properties were actually on the tax, tax roll. Now it's, we're putting it forward. I appreciate that this is covered in terms of if this doesn't happen, and those infrastructure costs are repaid. That's great. I just wonder if that makes sense to do the rebate as well. But I'm not going to make an issue. I'm not going to try to stop it. I just want to ask why we would amend our policy for a single development agreement. And then the other thing was that the, the cost estimate for the road extension with no sidewalks, that road is part of our Blue Zones Initiative, part of our walkability, bikeability. And the sidewalks were very important in that, to make that a complete street.
Actually, sorry, I didn't amend that real language. I usually had it, it's $170,000. I upped it to 170,000 to 200,000, accounting that there probably will be a sidewalk there, as Mike's, Mike advised. So again, that is my rough estimate based off of the previous Lincoln project. No engineers looked at that, so.
Oh, I see. Well, what's the next step? What level of detail do we need before we can move on this?
Well, they will bring back a development agreement. They'll meet again with Economic Development Committee and bring back a full agreement within, within due course, potentially with, before next meeting.
Well, and I think the thing is that Jim was very anxious to have the feeling of the council regarding, you know, his purchasing of this property to proceed with the project. That, I mean, that, you know, is a decision that he was kind of wanting to feel comfortable with in terms of knowing that we were wanting to see this proceed.
Makes sense. Okay. Doug and Katie, any questions from your side?
No, I love the idea of more development. I love the idea of more development.
It's a great idea. I think the Development Committee should come back with good rationalization if we're going to offer both abatement and TIF in the same package. That's all.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you. I think that, that hopefully gives you some positive indications that, you know, we do want to see the development go forward. So we look forward to seeing the final agreement. Great, thank you. Okay, next, council will move to our resolutions and action items. And the first is to set up a public hearing for Grimes Avenue resurfacing project. And we will set that for our next meeting, May 23 at 7:00 PM. So entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And next, we have consideration to authorize Alliant Energy to install a streetlight on Woodside Circle. Katie, if you'd, please with that, please.
We had a couple approach the safety and, Public Safety and Transportation Committee that on Woodside Circle, towards the end near the cul-de-sac, there's actually no Alliant pole or light. And it makes for a very dark circle where kids are riding bikes and people are living and walking. And we spoke with Darrell and kind of looked at the images. And with careful consideration of placement, we would like to encourage the placement of a light in that circle to match the next cul-de-sac down the road, which does have one. So we thought it was a great idea for safety and for good lighting.
Very good.
that on Woodside Circle, towards the end, near the cul-de-sac, there's actually no Alliant pole or light. And it makes for a very dark circle where kids are riding bikes and people are living and walking. And we spoke with Darrell and kind of looked at the images, and with careful consideration of placement, we would like to encourage the placement of a light in that circle to match the next cul-de-sac down the road, which does have one.
Okay.
So we thought it was a great idea for safety and for good lighting.
Very good. Any questions, council? Not, Katie, will make that a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, resolution to consider a yield sign on Park and Harrison.
Once again, Public Safety and Transportation was approached, this time by Chief Thomas, about an incident that happened at this intersection, and encouraged us to take a non-signed intersection and sign it with at least a yield, if not a stop sign. And after looking at the intersection, we determined a yield should be appropriate, and again, are encouraging Darrell to place a yield sign at that corner.
Okay, very good. And take that as a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
So good.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Okay, your next council, we have a resolution to consider a policy for delinquent utility accounts. Joy, would you please with that, please?
Yeah, Mindy in the Water Department has been working very diligently on this. We've got a lot of delinquent accounts. We've sent them to the Credit Bureau and the people have either moved away or whatever. And we just wanted to develop a policy that we can write those accounts off after five years. After 90 days, we send them to the Credit Bureau, and then after five years, if we don't hear anything back, we'd like to be able to write those off every year. And then if they're in legal status, like if it's in an estate or whatever, it's seven years. And if it's more than $500, they're going to bring each for the council to decide because that is a kind of a large bill. But, but that's what, we just wanted to have a policy on the books that can say, you know, we were able to write them off every year.
Okay.
And the Utility Committee did look at this and is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Okay, so, and then we have two resolutions. Joy, can you tell us the distinction between the two?
Right, the second one is the list of the delinquent accounts that are older than five years. It's pretty, you know, extensive. Mindy did a lot of work on this. She, she had the names and then she decided, you know, for privacy, she just put the account number. So if anybody's really curious, I know there's a really big one in here, like $1,700 or something. You're welcome to ask one of the girls in the Water Department.
So this initial resolution, we're not going to worry about the individual claims over $500?
The initial one.
Or the initial action tonight will include over $500 amounts?
The first one.
Tonight?
Yeah, the first one will be over $500 from now on. These, and the second resolution, they're, yeah.
There's a few over $500.
There are some that are over $500, but they're very old.
Okay.
I mean, I think that one was 2009, the seven, yeah, 2009, the $1,700 one.
Some of these date back to 2002, I believe, or '03.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've just never had a policy on the books to say. And it was a recommendation too by the auditors. We, it was one of the comments and.
The second resolution is basically a resolution to catch us up to within five years.
Yes.
In the Institute of Policy that we just would approve part of this.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Then entertain a motion to approve the policy for delinquent utility accounts.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy. Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign.
Definitely not, but aye.
Thank you. Next, then a resolution then affirming the writing off of the delinquent accounts listed.
But by the way, we should point out that writing off does not mean forgiving the debt. Just in case anyone's asking, so we're not being forgiven, just writing them off on the books.
Yeah.
We will still accept payment if somebody walks in after 10 years. Says, no, I forgot to pay that water bill.
I say, do we have a way to track if they do come back?
Yes, yes, yeah, there is a way to.
It'll be on record.
It follows their account number.
Okay.
But, yeah, you know, I balance the bank statement and we carry those forward year after, you know, yeah. So it's, it's just kind of cleaning up the books.
Kind of like late fees at the movie place, you never, can never shake them.
Right, right.
Maybe we ought to get their collectors working for us. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have an amended plat to be presented to the council tonight by Martin Brett. Martin?
So it's a little bit simpler than an amended plat. The, the truth of the situation is, the last version I brought through had a couple of little errors in it that only really I would know. And I showed it to Mike and Rebecca and, you know, how we would change it, but it was all, all of the corrections I had to make were within the blocks, within what had been negotiated in the planning and zoning, and with, within the Phase Five Plan Development rules and all of this. And to, to correct this and run it through the planning and zoning, public hearing, city council all over again, I think would have been really just bureaucratic.
Okay.
Waste everyone's time and.
So is there a language change in this resolution that encompasses the change?
You know, Mike, I haven't seen the resolution.
Okay, okay. Just maybe if you walk the council through the changes on the lot lines and the plat, Martin.
So if you, if you look at, I don't know what you're looking at, but if you look at block, okay, good. You're looking at Block Six, you can see that those, the lots were brought all the way up to the block lot line, and it left no common area up front, which is what we had intended.
I see.
And, and so it's within the block, everything's a little farther back, we just drew it up wrong. And then, and then, and then with these really small lots like this, it gets a little confusing because there's zero lot lines, you know, where the buildings are going to be, and that's what I did unfortunately to the, to the surveyor in giving him his instructions to draw this up. And then in the lot, the next block, Block Five, those lots were supposed to be the same size exactly in east to west length as those in Block Six. And they were shut, they were cut off at the front end of the houses. Because of the mechanics of how zero lot lines work, there's some overlap to house lines and lot lines that I just wasn't clear enough with the surveyor. But it met all the setbacks and the city rules that we had agreed upon. And then Lot, and then Block Four was just a repeat of Block Five, the same changes needed to be there.
Okay, now these seem to be pretty basic, no substantial change.
It's pretty basic. To really walk you through exactly what got changed, we would be here for a while in terms of, you know, the detailed survey, but the actual effect of them is what I just said a few sentences.
Council, any questions for Martin?
One additional item.
Yes, go ahead.
Our council has reviewed the changes and prepared the resolution for your consideration tonight, so John has taken a look at it and he's comfortable with the changes that meets our, our process requirements.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Martin. Okay. Let it entertain a motion to approve the amended plat for the MUM Phase Five subdivision.
So moved.
To approve.
Okay. Moved by Hallie, second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Okay, thank you, Martin. Appreciate it. Council, this next resolution, I think, two meetings ago, I asked you to appoint Josh Larrabee to the Area 15 Multi-County Housing Agency. They got back to us and said that needed to be done by resolution, so this is again asking for you to approve Josh Larrabee to represent the City of Fairfield on the Area 15 Multi-County Housing Agency. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, the third and final reading of ordinance 1137, and again, this is the Park and Recreation Advisory Board amending the duties and some of the other elements of the Park and Recreation Board. This is a public hearing, so we'll declare that open at this time and ask if there's anyone who would like to address the final reading of this ordinance. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to approve through the final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
So good.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And council, we have the second reading of the First Floor Projecting Sign Regulations, 1138. This is public hearing, declare them open at this time. Terry Baker, any? No? Okay. We'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for approval for this resolution from the second to the third reading.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council, I just wanted to call to your attention, if you hadn't seen it today, we were listed by an organization out of Plano, Texas called Save On Energy that compiles a list of bike-friendly cities as one of their elements for eco-friendly cities. And based on recent U.S. Census data, there were 15 cities that were listed as most bike-friendly in the, in the country, and there were three categories, it was a large city, a medium city, and a small city. And Fairfield was listed number five out of five for bike-friendly city. So that's feedback that our citizens are, you know, giving through the census to say that they utilize that form of transportation in ways in their lives that's, gets them back and forth to work, things like that. I think it's, it does, you know, really bode well for us because obviously those are the kinds of communities people are looking to live in. It does also underscore the commitments that we've made to wellness through the Blue Zones. And I think it's very good all around. It's also a good reminder that we need to continue to keep looking at ways to make our city pedestrian and bike-friendly so that we have more of that in the future. But congratulations to everybody in the city that got us this attention, so we'll list that on our website and enjoy that for the next year. We'll move to our committee reports. Economic Development Committee, Martha, anything additional?
I guess, yes, there is one item in the sense that we also just continued to discuss the spec building and, you know, hopefully, I guess maybe if Adam wants to discuss, I mean, in terms of, he's in the process of gathering funds and sort of made his, you know, presentation to our committee. And so I thought, if he has any additional things that he's, in the last week has happened.
I'll just kind of give you the 30,000 overhead shot of it. We're hoping to build a 30,000 square foot industrial building in the new industrial park along 227th Street. And we have not decided on the specific specs yet, although it was likely to be between 22 to 30-foot height, gravel floor inside, and it'll be hooked up to Access Energy, who's bringing three-phase electric out there. We've already got the grant from the DOT and the partnership with the county and the city to get the road paved, and we also have another grant, or excuse me, a 0% interest loan from Access Energy to get the sewer out there this year as well. So we've got a lot of things moving in the industrial park. And to kind of kick off the marketing of the industrial park, we'd like to construct this building to attract new jobs in the community, and hopefully, this is about 12 to 18 months out, so we'll have all these beautiful new houses and some jobs for people to, to work at in those. So we have a 28E agreement meeting scheduled for, Mike, is that next?
May 24th.
May 24th, thanks. With Access Energy, Iowa Area Development Group, the city and the county. And we'll be trying to pin down the specific terms of what the agreement is. Right now, the request is for the county and the city to both put in $78,000 as a 0% 10-year loan to FIDA. We'll retain ownership of the building and repay the city and the county upon sale of the building. And then the second term of that is, there's a $400,000 0% 10-year loan from USDA funneling through Access Energy to FIDA. And Northeast Missouri Electric and Access Energy will guarantee 50% of that repayment, which starts at the end of year three. And the city, county, and FIDA would need to guarantee the other 50% of that until such time the building was sold or leased. Now, we're hoping that we'll never get to year three and have to make any of those payments. And I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that we won't, but we need to put in the plans into place that we can make those repayments in the instance that it has not been sold or leased at the end of year three. So we believe we can borrow from the UDAG fund, which has a balance of $92,000. We'll need to talk about reallocation of some other expenditures from that account to do that, but that is where we'd like to borrow the funds for. Those are designated for economic development purposes. And the county has tentatively said yes to this. The committee said, continue to investigate, yes, assuming we can get the funds put together. So general fair statement again, Martha?
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we're at. We need to draft the 28E. Once we have that in place, we'll bring that in front of the council and the board supervisors for final approval.
Great, thanks, Adam. Thanks for the update. I'm happy to hear this project progressing. I think it would be.
We felt that, committee once again felt that, you know, we would do everything we could in terms of encouraging it and moving it forward.
Well, and just like our housing, I think we definitely have opportunities for manufacturing space within the community. It's limited and, you know, with the new development in that area, I think it would be wonderful to have that project underway as well.
Good.
Next, our Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Yes, we met on May 2nd, and we considered a few items here. One was a bill reduction request at 200 North 28th Street, that's leisure living estates. They had a water leak that released quite a large sum of water under the grounds, so we rebated their sewer portion of the amount of $1,437.68. And the other item is the, we did do a housing survey insert in the water bill a few weeks ago, and that's generally the policy, not to put inserts into that billing, but since the pathfinders are sharing that information with the city, we go ahead and approve that and place that in the building because it had an interest directly to the city, was involved. And then we already talked about the policy on the delinquent utility accounts, and we also talked about the dismissal of the delinquent accounts that we voted on tonight already. It's everything.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Michael?
A while back, Adam Pliggy, myself, Ray Chambers, the Veteran Affairs Director for the county, got together and started the process of making Fairfield and Jefferson County a Homebase Iowa community. Homebase Iowa is a governor's, a program from the governor's office to incentivize veterans who are currently living outside the state to relocate to communities within the state of Iowa. It's, basically, it's an incentive program. I worked on the side of getting the city incentive from the city, so we had the Parks and Rec to offer a temporary free membership to vets relocating. FIDA's offering a rebate for house lots.
Lots.
Lots, yep. And a number of businesses joined, and so we were able to achieve this designation. The Lieutenant Governor is coming to Fairfield on May 11th, this Wednesday, 4 o'clock, Jefferson County Courthouse courtroom. Will be about half an hour program, mayor will be there, Supervisor Lee Dimmitt, and also local business owner Troy Van Beek, who is himself a veteran and makes a point of hiring vets to speak about that. And so we invite everyone, the press, everybody to come and essentially recognize this, I think of it as the least we could do for vets, but it's something and it's a start. I'd like to see this as the beginning of more such programs, but it was, we had a lot lot of community support for it, so we'd like to see people come out Wednesday, 4 o'clock courthouse.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Thanks for your work on this, Adam. Thank you also for your work on this. And I think we're, you know, we're very proud, very excited to be able to participate and to attract those who would find our community a place supportive of veterans and living their lives beyond their service. So thank you very much. Any other business for the council?
Just one update, Mayor. I may. I just wanted to give the council an update on the search process for the Park and Rec Director. We're approximately two-thirds way through the search process.